Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. Also, welcome to my colleagues on council and city staff. Council members, please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on September 27, 2022, and a regular meeting on September 27, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker is absent. Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
And, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a presentation at this time, and there will be a proclamation presented to the Healthy Portsmouth Coalition for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Is that individual with us today?
Yes, sir. The group is here and present, and we ask you to please come forward and join the mayor If you would please line up across the front of the dais so that we can get you in the camera, if you don't mind.
Can we get some assistance with the microphone, please? See, the mayor doesn't know how to turn the microphone.
There it is.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you for helping. And thank you all for being with us tonight in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, October 2022 marks 37 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas, Healthy Portsmouth Coalition, in partnership with the City of Portsmouth and local community advocates, aims to increase education, awareness, and action to lower the incidence rates of breast cancer in the City of Portsmouth. And whereas, each year in the United States, about 264,000 cases of breast cancer are diagnosed in women and about 2,400 in men. Whereas, about 42,000 women and 500 men in the U.S. die each year from breast cancer. And whereas, the National Cancer Institute reports that from 2014 to 2018, the breast cancer incidence rate was 136 in Portsmouth per 100,000 women. And whereas, black women have a higher rate of death from breast cancer than white women, both in the U.S. and in Portsmouth. And whereas, Healthy Portsmouth, its community partners, and leading health agencies encourages participation and promotion of mammography and self-examination to support early detection and treatment by knowing your risks, getting screened, knowing you're normal, and making healthy lifestyle choices. Now, therefore, I, Shannon E. Glover, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Portsmouth, and recognize that by educating ourselves, we will improve the quality of life for all Portsmouth residents affected by breast cancer, and extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure. In witness whereof and on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Portsmouth to be affixed this 11th day of October 2022. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you to the residents of Portsmouth. We're making strides with breast cancer. When we started in 2010, 45% of the women in Portsmouth were getting mammograms. We're now up to 75%. We had gone up to 85%, but thanks to COVID, the numbers dropped. So keep up the good work. On October 20, from 4:30 to 6:30, there will be a Breast Cancer Resource Rally in the parking lot of the Portsmouth Health Department. And thank you for all that you all do for the community.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item on our agenda, public hearing, item 22-305, UP-22-12. And council members, staff has received a request. Staff has received a request for deferral at this time until our October 25 meeting. Understanding that a deferral is a decision of the City Council, staff instructed the applicant to have a representative present for today's meeting. What is your pleasure? We're in need of a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Council members, just to... You can be seated, sir. Just to clarify, this motion is to defer this item until your October 25 meeting. Okay? I have a motion by Councilwoman Lucas Burke and a second by Councilman Battle.
Thank you, ma'am. And, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker is absent. Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes.
This item is deferred until October 25.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We have now come to the item on our agenda, City Manager's Report, item 22-306. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting radiological emergency preparedness program funding in the amount of $700 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker is absent. Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 22-307. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $10,000 of inmate... Excuse me. Inmate canteen system revenue in the FY 2023 General Fund operating budget for use by the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker is absent. Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to new business item on our agenda, 22-308, Boards and Commissions. And I do not see Vice Mayor Barnes or Dr. Whitaker in our presence, so I suggest...
There are no items tonight, sir.
There are no items, right. So, the next item, item 22-309, item submitted by council. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution confirming a declaration of local emergency due to the threat of a nor'easter formed from the remnants of Hurricane Ian impacting Portsmouth, Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker is absent. Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes, ma'am.
Council members, do you have any additional items to submit? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, we approved some ARPA money for some of our nonprofit organizations. And, Mayor, my question is, has that money been appropriated? And if so, what is the process? And maybe the manager could speak to the application process.
Madam Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Moody, as far as the ARPA money, we are currently working on getting a handle on how the previous monies were sent. So we're currently working on an audit, or disseminated, I should say. We're contacting the businesses or the nonprofits that received last year's funding and see how they were utilized. My staff is actually working on a process for us to formalize how we will move forward this year on how these monies will be disseminated.
So, in the application process, is there a new application? Because last year, we didn't have ARPA money, and I think this will represent more money going out to some of our nonprofits.
Mr. Baldwin, if you can speak to the process. What we have found is there are like three different applications, and there have been some confusion with our citizens on what type of money, whether it's ARPA money or other processes. So that's what they're working on. Bob, if you can speak to that. I appreciate it. Certainly. And, good evening, Mayor Glover, Councilman Moody. To your question, we are working on a process for the city manager to use to request application for these ARPA funds, as you noted, and just following up on her comments. We have just noted internally there's some confusion from the community on whether or not they've applied to, you know, certain programs. So we're making sure we're clarifying each one of those different programs, for example, your incentive, you know, matching grant program being different than this program. And so, we will have an application form, at least that's what we'll be recommending to the city manager specifically for this, so we can track exactly what is sent out, who it goes to, and track our ARPA funds appropriately.
Right. So, as we said here tonight, no money's been appropriated to... No, ARPA money's been appropriated. Is that a correct statement?
No, that is not a correct statement, because over the past year, ARPA money has been disseminated. And so that's what we're trying to ascertain who has received the funding, because I've spoken to some individuals whose name is on a list, and they said they haven't received funding. So I'm in the process of ascertaining who has received funding and how the funding was properly used. And then we can move forward from there.
Yeah, I think we need a good accounting and a good justification of where the money has gone to. I didn't realize that ARPA money had already gone to some of these organizations. So I guess what I'm requesting, Mayor, is a detailed briefing and accounting for any money, ARPA money, that's been appropriated to these 501(c)(3) organizations.
Okay, sir. Before I give you the floor, Mr. Battle, Councilwoman Lucas Burke had the floor?
Yes, sir.
So she will then speak, then you, sir. And, Councilman Woodard, did you want the floor as well? Okay. And then you'll go after Mr. Battle. And then we'll have that discussion. Ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like you all to join me in congratulating our mayor. He received the Community Workforce Champion Award from the Workforce Development. It was the Workforce Innovation Award Program. It was an excellent awarded program. They do a lot of work making sure that our youth and adults receive opportunities to be connected to work. So applaud our mayor on receiving that award. We also took home a clean sweep with our communities and schools who are right here in Portsmouth and also fairly with their business. So Portsmouth was well represented that night. Also want to bring to your attention, on Monday, October 17, we will have our street naming, renaming of the Street McLean to the Missy Elliott Boulevard. The first part of that will happen around 1:30 to 2:00, where the street naming will occur. That's going to be a small group, but the parade will happen at Manor High School, which is better for our police department to contain the amount of persons that want to be in attendance there, and of course, not having to obstruct the streets during that high-traffic time around the 3 o'clock timeframe. So hopefully, you all will be able to join us at Manor High School. Missy is a graduate of Manor High School, and I am also a proud graduate of Manor High School and also Norfolk State University. So, I had to throw that shameless plug in there. But we do have that, and we hope that you will be able to join us for those events. And was happy to represent City of Portsmouth for the Virginia Municipal League Conference. The annual conference was held this year in Richmond, Virginia, and we received a plethora of information that we want to bring back to our city and hope to expand on some of the good things that we're doing and hopefully take some of those ideas to bring more funding into our city that will make our city a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, madam. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Madam Manager, has any of your administration given out any COVID funding since you've been here?
No, sir. COVID funding has not been disseminated.
So Mr. Moody is asking for what the previous administration did evidently?
I'll say to my knowledge.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is for our city manager as well. I just want to see, can we get an update on the facilities at the Cavalier Manor Field? Prior to, like I said, early this year, we did get an update about some challenges we were having. But, you know, I still hear from the community that's a pending item with construction and upgrades for those recreation facilities. So is there any way we can get a report back on that? I would truly appreciate that. Also, the community has been asking me about putting different signs within their community, you know, deterring loitering and also picking up trash. So I didn't know if this could be something like some site locations that you can do throughout your Rock the Block initiative when you go into some of these troubled communities? Because, you know, just the small signs or whatnot can help out deter crime and littering within those communities. So, you know, just a small step, something that you can add towards your walks.
So are you referring to the Cavalier Manor Rec Center?
Just the outdoor facilities for, I guess, the baseball bathrooms and concession stands. They're saying that those upgrades or those updates are still not done for those facilities.
Okay. I'll get a report back from staff and get to you.
All right.
There is a report back in your current book as far as the facilities themselves at Cavalier Manor for today's meeting. So check there. And as far as the signs, the chief spoke earlier during the work session about panhandler signs that we're working on. So we'll definitely look into that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I did have a request. So I guess, listening to the discussion about the ARPA funds, the first round of ARPA funds that were dispersed to nonprofits, I don't know that we ever received a full accounting for the first round of ARPA funds. So I think that may be what we're looking to see. In addition to that, we know that there was a vote taken to disperse the second round of ARPA funds, and I think that's what we're also concerned about, how that process will go. So two things. The first round, where did the dollars go? Who did they go to? And how much? And on the second round, as you said, you all are working on doing a new process or streamlining that process?
Yes, sir.
And no dollars have been allocated on the second round. So I just think...
Not to the community.
Right, to the community.
Correct.
So I think that's probably what is being asked. Do we need a consensus for that to take place? Or can I just be and ask for you to bring that report back before our review?
Sir, we would certainly bring the report back for the review. That's what we've been working on for the past couple of weeks.
Very good.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So we should see that hopefully, perhaps, at the next meeting or before the next meeting?
We're able to find all the information. Yes, sir. That's the goal.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Was that acceptable to everyone? Thank you. Moving right along. Are there any other council members? Do we have any other additional items to submit? I will like to say to the community, on this Saturday, there was a walk at Walk for Humanity at I.C. Norcom High School, and it was held... The individual who was there was Dr. John Carlos. And many of you may remember Dr. John or John Carlos in the 1968 Olympics. He took a stand and stood up for civil rights and justice in our country. And I had the pleasure of being there on Saturday morning at 8 o'clock to walk two or three miles. But the most important part of that was Mr. Carlos and coming to the City of Portsmouth and sharing with our youth and others who attended his vision and hope, you know, for us to be the best community that we can be. And I was grateful that the organization, Ms. Jackie Kendall and others, worked collaboratively together. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Portsmouth Alumni Chapter, and many others put in the work to bring Dr. Carlos here. And we hope that it will turn into an annual event where we can get more individuals out to learn about how we can work together in our community to make it safer and better for us all. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. Item 22-310, report on pending items. City Manager Chapman.
Have nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 22-311, non-agenda speakers. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe the basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that in mind, our first speaker is Mr. Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle, sir, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and fellow citizens. First thing, I got three questions. This is for the City Manager. When are we going to update the Crime Prevention Plan? You still have a Crime Prevention Plan that's listed for October 2021. I was wondering, when are we going to update that to let the citizens see and know all the initiatives that you're doing, like the CCTVs and the Rock the Block? It's not in the new Crime Prevention Plan. The other question is Operation Ceasefire. I've seen three videos. I was wondering, how could Unseen Tears be a part of Operation Ceasefire? Why? Because we're in contact with most, majority of the mothers who've been killed, or sons or daughters who've been killed in the city. So I'm reaching out to see, how can Unseen Tears be a part of that? The third question is, your Rock the Block initiative, are organizations who have been provided funding from the city, why aren't they included with pamphlets given out to the citizens and the communities that you go into? Because currently, I've talked to several people, and they have young children that are in school who have issues with gangs, and there are no resources. They're saying there are no resources in your city or in your Rock the Block initiative. So my question is, are any of the organizations who've received funding prior to you being here, are they included in that Rock the Block or the Reset Walk? Another thing, you guys had a meeting with Senator Warner, Delegate Don Skye, and Stephen Morales. And what was said is that at the state level, that they didn't approve for a crime prevention or a witness protection program, which makes no sense whatsoever.
I'm sorry to disturb you, but you said you guys had a meeting. I wasn't in that meeting, sir.
My time, can I... Can I... Out of my time?
I just wanted to let you know that I wasn't in that meeting.
Can I get my time back? Excuse me, Mr. Battle. Please address the chair for permission to have the floor before you speak. Please, sir. Thank you very much.
Can I get my time back, Mayor?
Sir, please, please continue talking.
Okay. When I say you guys, I didn't mean it in disrespect. I didn't mean it in disrespect. I didn't want to call them by their name out, but anyway.
Please continue and keep it the way it is.
Witness Protection Program, why was it, how we found out why they, at the House or at the Senate or whenever level, why did they deny it? And then Stephen, Mr. Stephen Morales, you know, she's pushing an initiative now, but I think this should have been already done based on the information that we've already had on several of our cases, where witnesses wouldn't come forward because they couldn't, the police department, which is not a their doing, couldn't provide the real protection that they needed. And I know one case in point that I'm not going to mention, but I had a female tell me that she was in the vicinity of the murder. Gave me the whole rundown, but she would not participate in the process because of the lack of safety or the lack of cooperation with the city attorney or whomever for protection. So, again, why aren't we talking more about these necessary things? And again, crime is, one of your council people said something to the notion that crime is quietly getting, going down. But I'm here to tell you, there are seasons for hurricanes and a season for storms. There's not a season for death. So, you can't say that that's been quiet lately because at any moment, somebody, life could be taken. So, again, I just wanted to bring that out to you guys. And with the delegate and the Senator Warner stated, asked Stephen Morales, he asked her, if the problem of getting witnesses was a court, have we found out, has it worsened in the recent years because of not having the Witness Protection Program? That question, for a senator to ask a Commonwealth attorney that question, and we don't have any answers behind it, I think that we, this is why Portsmouth is in the state that we're in right now. Nobody's, they're asking the question like they never knew this was happening in the city of Portsmouth. But I'm gonna go ahead and move on because I have a list of young men and women, and I have to speak their names so that your voice and their names will always be remembered. Charles Mosley, Corey Tur, Timothy Bill, Emmanuel Tur, Jeffrey Bazemore, Jaquan Johnson, Carlton Dodd, Tyche Wolf, Anthony Skeeter, Requon Morgan, Nazir Hicks, Jamal Howard, Delion Granger, Amaje Lee, Demond Mitchell, Lakeisha Smith, Deandre Morrison, Joshua Sykes, Antoine Wiggins, Tali Farmer, Vernon Norville, Yashim Kerwick, James Hill, Dante Copeland, Robert Artis, Malcolm Hoskins, Javon Williams, Camodre Howard, Dequon Epps. Mayor, can I continue?
Please finish your list, sir.
Thank you. Omar Booker, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Timothy Shine, Brian Williams, Marquell, Curtis Walton, Carrie Thomas, William Sevrich, Carlton Baines, Mantonia Bunch, Curtis Richardson, Andre Hall, Kiara, Victor Green, David Branch, Lawrence Kofa, Crystal Jacobs, Derek Parker, Demetrius White, Boobie Staten, Malani Everett, Amarin Collins, Andre Bataia, Kareem Barshay, Rodney Anderson, Gary Fields, Jamont Mitchell, Keith Warren, Requon Gray, Dion Lofton, Georgia Devonte Lee, Alicia Deion Mears, Ashley Merks, Robert Parker, Daylin Spence, Terrance A. Johnson, Devon Crosby, Tyrell Jones, Ariel McLaren, Jasavian Hill, Keandre Jenkins, John Plummer, Bernard Clack, Maze Moon, Anthony Brown, Jaquan White, Christopher Washington, Clifton Privet, Ashante Britt, Lamont Brown, Donald Thornton. And this is why I say that, why are we acting like we didn't know this was going on? There's murders on this list that people know who were involved, but they are too afraid to come forward. So, again, the question again, why was it denied at the state level?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. City Attorney, Madam City Attorney, you asked for the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cradle, for these important issues. I just wanted to clarify one point. My office has not been reached out by anyone seeking protection. If they do, we will do what we can to help them. We have a good working relationship with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. So, if you have anyone, feel free to direct them to my office, but we've not been contacted by anybody.
Thank you, ma'am. No, sir. No, sir. Well, what I will share with you, what we learned, no, you can come back up if you want to listen, but what we- No, no, we're not going to respond to that. She provided you some information. And I'm going to provide you with some information based on what we learned in that meeting. On the Victim Witness Protection Program, they have that at the federal level, to my knowledge, but it has not been funded at the state level, that particular program. And when the Commonwealth Attorney was in the room, she talked about that. And that was the purpose of having our Congressman Bobby Scott and our Senator Mark Warner in the room to talk about how can we remedy that. That is not wholly a city responsibility, and a lot of it lays in the office of the Commonwealth Attorney. So, I just want to let you know that that is what took place, and there was a discussion, and information was taken down. So, you will probably hear a lot more about that into the future. I am not disagreeing with your main premise on that point, but some of the things the city, this team, and the manager is not the point of responsibility for that to occur. And so, we have to go through the normal channels of government to get that done. Okay? I just wanted to make that clear. So, it's not a city thing per se that we can just set up something. We do have a program that's not the Victim Witness Program, and it's the other program that we have received funding for, and we fund that program. But it's not the program that you're seeking that will set aside resources to relocate folks, to put them in a different environment and take them out of the environment where a threat possibly exists. Okay? So, that's the truth. Now, you asked the manager a couple of other questions that you indicated if she had information. Madam Manager, are you prepared to answer any of those other questions perhaps?
Mr. Cradle, in reference to the Crime Prevention Plan and what's the other one? The Operation Ceasefire, if you can connect with Chief Jenkins, he would more than happy, more than be happy to update you on those. Okay? Thank you.
I can't respond.
Go ahead, sir.
How you doing, City Attorney? The only reason I said I want to respond to you is because we do have cases. I do have cases in victims' families who are afraid to reach out to even you, let alone the Commonwealth Attorney, in a lot of these cases. What we're saying is at the state level, the city level, you have valid murderers still in your city who are out on bond and things of that nature. So, again, these people are afraid, and that's why it's quiet now, but stick around. Just wait and see.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Sa. And ma'am, if you come up and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. How do you fix this?
Ms. Ashley will help you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. You have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Donna Sa. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Let's talk about examples of how the people can begin to self-govern in this city. The first step is to look at the organizational chart of the city. At the top is we, the people, the citizens. We, the people, are the government. Under the people are the different branches of government. The judicial system, the city council made up of five officials in the legislative branch and two in the executive branch. And the five constitutional officers underneath the city council are the city assessor, city attorney, city clerk, and the city manager. Underneath the city manager, there are four columns with three deputy city managers and one column under the city manager. There is a problem noted. For example, there are two divisions of the community and economic development in the first column and one in the fourth column. Another example is the general government department has two divisions in the second column, one in the third column, and one in the fourth column. We need all these departments showing its divisions. Not only that, the departments need to show the boards and/or commissions attached to it. Also, be aware that both the public works and the general services have some of the same divisions. How can there be any order in the city if there's no structure for the working of working together? How can the people self-govern if the elected aren't talking with us? Okay, let's fix it. The former police chief used a format of five police service areas with voting precincts. There are five legislators on city councils, so each one can choose which district he or she would like to represent. For example, these five districts can be called Downtown, Craddock, Cavalier Manor, Hodges Manor, and Churchland. The five of you choose among yourself which district you will represent. Then you call all the voting precincts listed in your district and meet in a church's social hall. All the voting precincts have an assigned table. They will have an action worksheet to discuss what is needed in his or her neighborhood. All the suggestions are put on a paper easel and priorities are made. This leads to the operating and capital budget development process. Portsmouth could learn from Gloucester County. They have a Capital Improvement Plan manual. Not only that, their CIP or Capital Improvement Plan Development Team prepares their CIP program with the Planning Commission. This helps the program to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and provides citizens an opportunity to give his or her perspective and input in the planning process. Their process with their CIP helps to assess the county's existing condition and also identifies the people's needs which must be addressed. Portsmouth doesn't have a process like Gloucester County. Portsmouth needs to help, needs help from Gloucester County to learn how to be better organized. There needs to be a requirement that all boards and commission projects need to come before the Planning Commission. One example is that PRHA purchased property before coming before the Planning Commission and then to city council to have it approved. Another example is Town Bank purchased 206 High Street, then the city bought it from Town Bank. Why did the city spend that money on that building instead of Town Bank taking care of its own business? Then all the things, then of all things, the city stuck the police department in it. Stop spending the people's money and raising our taxes and fees for your pleasure to the people's detriment.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Godalde Jachowski. Sir, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors.
Good evening, sir.
My chosen topic tonight is autocracy poisons democracy. The definition that the dictionary provides of autocracy is a state, that is to say, like a nation-state, in which there is single-person rule and often absolute. So, there are certain autocratic tendencies that we see in our governmental structure in the way that the people's business is executed. There are certain safeguards against autocracy. This city council, for example, uses this manual as a guide to the conduct of its business. This is Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, 12th edition. And it has, as you can see, it's a rather thick tome. I've had nearly a 60-year relationship with Robert's Rules, going back to student congress in high school. It has evolved over that time, but the basic principles remain the same. And the object is to have a level playing field for the conduct of business, not just public business, but there are private organizations that use it as their reference. The problem is, when members of a particular organization reference it but are not very familiar with its provisions, errors are made that result in injustices being perpetrated. The presiding officer is the ultimate arbiter of what parliamentary procedure means. You have a capable city attorney who is available to you. You collectively have this expert in the field of law and hopefully in parliamentary procedure as well. But she only gets to speak on parliamentary procedure matters when the presiding officer asks for an opinion. So, if there is any uncertainty, she may not be able to give you the benefit of her advice if not asked. I maintain that there should be no shame in recognizing that there's something the mayor or members of council do not know about parliamentary procedure. And there are mechanisms in this book for requesting that information from the person with the most expertise. I would encourage you all to use it. The speaker's statement that you read, that the clerk actually reads twice, to me is an illustration of an autocratic tendency. The final, the closing portion of that speaker's statement seems to me intended to choke off presentations from citizens. Belligerent, sarcastic, those are subjective. And so, the mayor, whoever the mayor is, be it the previous mayor or the current mayor, has a lot of discretion. And if the speaker is somebody whom the sitting mayor is not disposed kindly toward, there are ways to use that speaker's statement to censor what is being said. I would ask you to review that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Angela Britt? Angela Britt, Ms. Britt, ma'am, would you come forward, state your name and address, and ma'am, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we give you the praise and honor. We thank you because all is well with us. We ask you right now to have your way in this place, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
My name is Angela Britt. I'm a resident of Chesapeake.
Ms. Britt, could you please kind of pull the mic? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So, we can all hear you.
Okay. My name is Angela Britt. I'm a resident of Chesapeake. I would like to present a presentation today in reference to Public Redevelopment Housing Authority. Just want to inform the community of Dell's Home Project and advise them of some of their rights. The Board of Commission Executive Director is Mr. Edward Bland. Bruce Lalande, Chair- The Board of Commission Executive Director is Mr. Edward Bland, Bruce Lalande Chairman, Marion Jett Vice Chair, Zalita Costa Chairman, Clifton Pickens Commissioner, Sin Prince Commissioner, Renee Witt is Commissioner, and Stephanie White is Commissioner. Want to inform the residents of Dale's Home that they have a resident tenant associate. They meet monthly meetings. You have to be 18 years old to join to discuss residents' concerns such as issues, activities, and community problems presented to the specific community needs. Exactly what has actually been discussed? Gang activity and gun violence? Who is on these associations? Does the resident know that they can join these particular associations? Associations to voice Dale's opinion and to know how the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authorities are addressing Dale's concern about gun activities and gun violence in their community? The Resident Advisory Board is another organization they can join to help curb crime in their in their neighborhoods. The Advisory Boards meet monthly with the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, again, to gain and discuss concerns, activity problems that are affecting the residents of Dale's Home community. Again, are they addressing gun and gang activities in Dale's Home at these meetings? What are their short and long terms goals? To address the killing of our young black youth? Have any of these questions been addressed within these board meetings? And if so, what is the solution? The residents of Dale's Home have the rights to know what are the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority is doing with these concerns, gang violence, and and gun activities in their neighborhood. They also have a public safety committee. The Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority says that they strive to provide peaceful, safe, and enjoyable community activities for all their residents in Dale's Home. I find that a little hard to believe when someone's child is being killed each day in Dale's Home. Safe, what is your definition of safe for the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority? When you can't allow your children to come outside to play because of gangs, activities, and gun violence within their community? Or are the residents afraid to let their children go outside to play because fear that their child is going to be shot or killed? So again, the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, what are you doing to eliminate the Dale's Home community concerns about gangs, activity, and gun violence in the neighborhood? Dale's Home residents have, do you have the right to know what solutions and actions are being taken to keep your children safe in your community? As mentioned, they say public safety. Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority stated that they assist in both the apprehensive and prosecution of criminal offenses offenders by giving out citations and lease terminations. Let's talk about lease termination within Dale's Home community. Lease termination, what a joke. When gun members live within the Dale's Home community with family members, and this is a known fact, so Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authorities, what are you doing about that? How can you stop gang violence when you are housing them? What is what is it that after a gang shooting activity, these same gang members run inside the residence where they live? Who are involved? Who are involved with these incidents? Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, how are you addressing this major problem within the Dale's Homes community? May I continue?
Please finish your thought, please.
You got to know, Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, I understand that under Virginia Code 192.13, that you have trained officers licensed and certified by the Department of Criminal Justice Service that have full arresting and investigation power. We are not talking about the Portsmouth Police Department, where officers hired by the Criminal Justice Service to proactive patrol all managed properties with the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. So where are these proactive patrol officers, and when do they patrol? When do they patrol? What are the hours they patrol the Dale's Home community? Because I know that Dale's Home residents would like to know that. In conclusion, the bottom line is Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, what are you doing? What are you doing to do or going to do about the gang activities, gun violence, and the killing of that occurs each and every night in Dale's Home? The residents want to know, what are you going to do to help keep their children safe? I would like to give thanks to the unseen tiers, non-profit organizations for helping getting cameras, surveillance installed in Dale's Home within the last three months. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. One of the things, before you leave, one of the things I would recommend to you, have you presented this presentation to the Board of Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing? I would suggest that you take this same presentation and that you request to come before the Board. They do allow speakers at their board meetings, do they? So they do allow speakers at their board meetings? So if you all would take this same presentation to the Board, you will speak directly to those individuals who set the policy for that organization and who can affect the change that you desire.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Ms. Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, you would please come forward, state your name and address, and ma'am, you
Good evening. Thank you for your time. And I just want to address briefly a few items that I have been talking about, about the storm drain in front of my home. I don't have one. And other areas, I didn't go into detail because it'd take me too long. That's why I brought y'all a lot of information. I don't know if you took time or read it. Did anyone take times each time I send a letter? I would like to know, you know, because I'm being very outspoken. But then I went and did research in other cities, and I found out they are putting out different ways how to deal with the floodings. And we looking at, for an example, before I came in 2016, all this been happening to me from 99, I didn't want to talk about the past. I wanted to talk about at least the latest one because it damaged my home. But the prevention and the storm drain, this, the stations, the pump stations and different things. My son and I researched many times in many cities, starting Washington. We could tell you how many it is, salt pumps, and how many it is in Virginia Beach. But to speed it up, then I'm looking at leaded pipes. I wrote to Congress and I spoke to you all, it's in my letters. Then I end up seeing on the TV how serious it is about the leaded pipes, which I already knew, but I didn't want to broadcast it. But God made a way where somebody from North Carolina is letting everybody know that the drainage, and not the drainage, but the leaded pipes are affecting us. And I know for a fact, because I have family members have died with breast cancer, and I ain't gonna name everything. Anybody in here want to know, pay attention to North Carolina. What make you think it's just North Carolina? I always tell people that I network with different people in different areas. My son started this T-shirt which been bootlegged throughout the United States. It's called Silverware. A lot of people came out using, when they saw his stuff, 7577 Cities and all that, but he's officially backed the copyright and the United States trademark. And we will, you know, be addressing that later on, but we wasn't concerned about money. For 16 years, he'd been back home from the Art Institute, and he'd been helping me research to do things better our city. We are connected with the Environmental and the DEQ. We are connected with, I won't gonna go into this, but the Principal of Environmental Justice, EJ. We are connected with VDA, you know, about the funds. And back in 2004 up to 2005, Portsmouth had gotten the less amount of anybody in the region. So now we are learning that you all have got, not what a lot of people think, a lot less money than you would ordinarily get. And I won't go into the details, but it's shared with me the reason why, because they don't see anything that y'all doing. Look at the streets. Look at the leaded pipes and the different things that's going on. And I see, even down to the super fund, I mentioned in my letter, different places I stayed in, and I talked about Washington Park and Lincoln Park, my family members in Dale's Home and different other areas. They've been affected by that super fund, leaded stuff. But it was a whole lot more out there, but I did not talk about it. But I'm addressing things now because I can't take it anymore because you're using, and I ain't gonna say the city doing it, but somehow the funds came from Washington Park, super funds, is being shared with places that didn't even have nothing to do with, some of my family members are dead today behind this stuff. With the Apex right there by Washington Park, one of my family members is deceased as of 2016. And I want to talk about the flooding level is steadily rising. Do y'all watch the city front downtown? Can I finish this thought?
You you need to finish the thought. Wrap up the thought, please.
I have taken pictures on time to time how the water is rising. Now, this last little time, it was up to the flattest one, go out there, there's the biggest one, and we only two more steps up. Sometimes during the summers and whatnot, when the tides rise and the water be going up, I notice that it's getting higher and higher. Now, I want to finish this thought, and I know that y'all address these issues, but I gather.
You have one more minute, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna speed it up. Y'all familiar with this? This is from Portsmouth, isn't it? This information?
I can't see that really. I don't really know what that is.
Okay, it says Virginia Coastal Zone Management.
Okay.
You know, I gather information because a lot of people don't come downtown and research and get stuff that is available to them. So I takes it and carry it back and share it with them, trying to give them a lot of knowledge about what's going on that they need to know. So I appreciate your time, but it's a whole lot going on, and it's a lot of people dying still away from those leaded pipes. So I just wanted to address that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
How you doing, Ms. Sheila? I think you've been coming down here about the issue of flooding in front of your home or within your home. And one thing about it, you know, this council really cares, and we want to find solutions to, you know, whatever problems our citizens have. City Manager Chapman, is there any way we can just, you know, get a follow-up update of what's going on? You know, because, you know, we want to find a means to end, particularly with this situation because, you know, it has been something she been addressing. And I thought we, you know, made some type of move on what we could do to help out her particular property, if it's something that we could do, you know, per se. So is there is there any way for us to continuously work on this problem with with Ms. Sheila?
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, I did recently meet with Ms. Joseph and her son and my new executive assistant. We're in the process of setting up a meeting for me and my team to go out into her neighborhood and walk the neighborhood and look at the individual drainage issue she's been concerned about.
Thank you. I know you did. You do such a wonderful job. Appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, ma'am.
I would like to thank you all, but right now, we don't have a lot of time to do a walkthrough because right now, every time we hear about a storm or heavy rain, we pouring sand in my house when other people outside of the house.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Merrill Rutledge. Sir, please come forward, state your name, address, and you will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Merrill Rutledge, and I won't state my address because I'm a candidate for Virginia State Senate. Mr. Mayor, the citizens of Portsmouth is the city government responsibility. So what if the federal government decides not to act on the witness protection program? If lives matter, then you would get the police and the necessary funding and resources to protect your city from murderers. The city has the funding, but finds it more important to put it elsewhere. Therefore, the number of murders going free, murderers going free while no justice for families increase. The real injustice isn't race. It looks good to talk about campaign promises, but the conviction that all of you are feeling is because you actually find the answers that you have given adequate. For example, the COVID funds on how it's spent should easily be able to be found. It should be easy as a bank statement or FOIA, which is a Freedom of Information Act request, and should be for inspection and review immediately. So any delays is an excuse. That's not how the city should do business. It's because the money was spent in ways that can't be justified, and now the delay is in the excuses behind its full disclosure. Now, simple to show where the transactions went. I'm not city manager, but have sat down with quite a few and made it happen and then give out magic that disappears. Let's talk about what's really on everyone's mind. The record levels of grocery and food prices, the record levels of poverty, the record levels of evictions, the record levels of shortages on police and first responders, the record levels of mental illness, the record level of campaign donations to politicians for campaign donations for private prisons, the record level of no after-school programs, the record level of drug addictions and suicides, the record level of assaults in our schools. The biggest threat to the city with crime is the ones that have the city council and its employees' attitude about addressing it. The next time you have a meeting with these U.S. senators, then try this time to tell them the steps you made to address these problems with crime and be the leaders that you made your voters believe. The city and their families have waited long enough. Everyone at the city council has said, regardless of race, gender, or background, but from your response is that we all don't matter, only your feelings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Bonnie Walton. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. I notice here there are two Walton names. Are you planning to speak, and you're allotted five minutes, and then is your daughter planning to speak in her allotted five minutes?
Yes, sir.
So, ma'am, could you have a seat while she speaks, please?
That's my moral support.
I I got you.
I love you, too. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and members of council. My name is Bonnie Walton, a single parent of two who moved to Portsmouth, Virginia over 25 years ago. We sought and continue to seek to partner with the city to make a safer, healthier, happier environment to all who call Portsmouth our home. Brighter lighting so that the streetlights would be seen no matter what block you stand or corner. Properly pruning the city-planted trees on a regular basis. Our family's home became a safe house, better known as McGruff House. Not sure who will remember this one, but... Not sure who will remember this one, but our official sign still hangs in my front window today. Committed to safety for all. As elementary and middle school students, the children would volunteer at the Crime Prevention Unit, then located, again, who will remember, on McLean Street. That was so many years ago. As high school students, both would be empowered by our city council to become members of the Portsmouth Youth Advisory Commission. The members of the Youth Advisory Commission would present different slogans to be worn on shirts in the community. At that time, our family's slogan, "Empowering Today's Youth for a Better Tomorrow," was voted and adopted by members of Portsmouth Youth Advisor Commission. The YAC members would shadow city elected and appointed officials, learning the Robert's rule while preparing for a mock city council to address the youth concerns of our city. My son was afforded the opportunity to pray at a former mayor's prayer breakfast. My daughter became a part-time employee in high school with the clerk of courts. Later on, my son became an intern during high school with the city manager's office, proudly speaking, I, I just appreciate that. Both children would also, my, excuse me, my son was an extern also with the city attorney's office during the summer of law school. Both children would go to the polls with me to vote at a very young age, instilling in them that your voice matters. We would then go to McDonald's prior to going to school. They even learned how to vote absentee while serving overseas. A copy of the Ten Commandments is visible to all who enter our home. You might ask how this relates. You see, our family, public service was then and remains now a priority in the midst of our uncivil unrest city of Portsmouth. On April the eighth of two thousand and twenty, my son, Curtis Walton, the one I'm sitting here speaking to everyone tonight, he was ambushed in the neighborhood that he grew up in, that he called home, where he was supposed to be safe, ambushed for no reason. Curtis was an all-around American young man, courageous, accountable, loved God, country and his family, valued life, integrity, respect, and most of all, knew the eternal value of life. In summer two thousand and eleven, Curtis would bring home courageous T-shirts for his family and even his pastor, Tom Potter. He was excited to see and take his family to see the premiere movie when it came out. Perhaps I will challenge all of us in this room this evening to watch this movie and have one takeaway that would change our lives. Would you be the one, man, woman, boy, girl, person, that will stand up and speak up and do what is right? My prayer for our city is that we will be courageous and turn from evil and hate what God hates. As I read this, my son Curtis underlined in his own Bible, Proverbs six, sixteen through nineteen, "The Lord hates six things; in fact, seven are detestable to him: arrogant eyes, a lying tongue, hands that shed innocent blood, a heart that plots wicked schemes, feet eager to run to evil, a lying witness who gives false testimony, and one who stirs up trouble among brothers." It is not where you come from, what titles you hold, the things you own, or how much money you have, it is your eternal value when your body on here on earth is no more. I would like to take a few moments and to reflect within ourselves our eternal value here on earth, that we may too leave a legacy worth living, remembering, and sharing. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit of the life, love, and legacy of my son, Curtis Walton. Thank you.
Ma'am, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and members of city council. My name is Cheryl Walton, and I've resided in West Haven for over twenty-five years. As a child and teen and former chair of the Portsmouth Youth Advisory Commission, I used to attend every council meeting to learn about what was happening in the city. Most of you, with the exception of Councilman Moody and City Clerk Mrs. White, would not know the last time I spoke in the city, in, I'm sorry, in front of the city council in this chamber. It was late two thousand and six, after I returned home from Washington, D.C., where I served as a United States Senate page. I spoke before council and the city of Portsmouth family about my experience, before I was presented a proclamation from Mayor James Hawley. Being a Senate page changed my life for two main reasons. I was a part of something bigger than myself, and I gleaned knowledge firsthand that I could not get out of a textbook. And second, my hero on earth, my brother Curtis Walton, empowered me to apply for that program, encouraging me to never give up on the long days. It was all surreal when I graduated from the program, because my brother attended that ceremony and still encouraged me throughout my life. You might be asking yourself, what does this have to do with anything, and where am I going with this? I'm glad you asked that question. You see, usually when I attend council meetings, my brother was here too. He is here tonight in spirit, but he will never attend another city council meeting in person. His goal was to run for office one day as mayor of the city of Portsmouth, to serve and give back, and then move on to state and federal office, even dreaming becoming the president of the United States, to make a difference. On April eighth, two thousand and twenty, two and a half years ago on Saturday, my brother was murdered on the corner of Columbia and Halifax while simply walking, walking in our neighborhood. He was thirty-three years old and had his whole life ahead of him. You've already heard that he was the first intern in the city manager's office, he served on the Portsmouth Youth Advisory Commission and sister city commissions, and externed in the city attorney's office. He did that to grow his breadth of knowledge and give back where he called home. He went on to become an attorney and served his country in a long career of public service, traveling to remote places to help others. He saw it as an honor and a calling to serve. He had the biggest heart of selfless love than I know, and he was a part of something bigger than himself. I'm here to speak out publicly for the first time. I'm not here just because of my brother, but for all of those who have lost family members and friends to senseless violence. You see, we've all become part of a club that no one wants to be a part of. We've become unwilling members, whether we want to be or not. You lose a family member to a senseless act of violence, and your world is completely turned upside down for the rest of your eternity on earth. Each loss of life to violence is one too many. On sites, we see people's photos with a name and a number, including my brother's, and it makes me sick to my stomach and even sit in here sharing that with you guys. These individuals are not and should not be a number on a list. We are talking about human beings, a soul, life. We're talking about someone's child. Human life should not be taken lightly, and it should not, and it should be celebrated. You may have noticed that I've mentioned violence a moment ago, and not specifically gun violence. It doesn't matter what type of violence that takes a life, it's completely unacceptable. I've been taught that violence is not the answer to any problem, and is definitely not the solution. I quote myself, "Violence is not the answer, so why is society allowed it to become the new and deadliest cancer?" Many lives are being taken every day, and all you have to do is turn the news on, and it's not just here in Portsmouth, it's everywhere. So I ask yourselves to put yourselves in my shoes for one moment. If you were a citizen like me without an elected, appointed, or an official position that lost a family member to violence, what would you want those in an elected, appointed, or official position to do? Now, think about it as an elected official. If your son, your daughter, your brother, your sister, or a family member was murdered, would you be doing anything different in your position to promote and enact change for the safety of the city and honor in recognizing their lives? You have the power to do something and enact change. Um, I know I'm almost out of time, ma'am.
Don't, 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 don't worry about your time. Please, finish, please.
I am here tonight not only to celebrate the life of Curtis Walton, as well as those lives that were taken by violence, but also because I'm here again, once a part of something bigger than myself. I would like to see change, I want change, and I've learned that in order to have change, I must be the change, and the first part of the change is to speak out. So together, I ask you to, let's take action to make this change in the community a safer and better place to live in Portsmouth that we call home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you this evening.
Councilman Woodard, sir, did you have a comment to make?
Thanks. Um, I think tonight we had a, a different type of meeting. Um, it was a lot of community, uh, heard and reflecting on some of the things that we've been having to deal with within this city in the past week, months, um, year. And, um, and, you know, I, I, I think some of the victims' names that we know, well, that some of the people come up here and say, we, we heard, quite frankly, before. And, um, you know, I just want to let you know that, um, us as elected officials, we're humans too, we, we hear these stories, and, um, we, we know that we can do certain things, but, you know, um, we, we have to get your input as well. You know, once again, we, we don't know every hotspot or, or what's going on in certain communities, but, you know, we want to reassure you that we are here for you, and, uh, if I can make a request, I hope it's appropriate, um, you know, I just want Councilman, Councilwoman Lucas Burke to kind of, uh, send us off tonight, you know, um, I really respect her as a Councilwoman. Um, I respect her heart, I respect her, 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 just being a wordsmith of consoling, um, the community, and, um, you know, if it's appropriate, I would love for you to say some things to the community right now.
Well, thank you. Um, I did have a lot, lot of things, um, on my mind and my heart, and a lot of times we come to these meetings to hear, uh, from our citizens, and then we, um, take that information, and it resonate in, in us as, as first citizens too. We are citizens here in the city of Portsmouth, we are elected by you. Uh, we take this information and we use our influence to try to enact, um, you know, laws or resolutions that will bring about change. Um, the meeting that was spoken about, um, earlier, uh, last week with Senator Warner and Congressman Bobby Scott, um, that was not a city planned meeting. Um, U.S. Senator Mark Warner, uh, commissioned certain people to the table, so everyone wasn't invited to attend, but we did have a presence of our city manager, our mayor, myself, some legislators from the Virginia General Assembly, and everyone was listening intently. There were some preachers and some other community leaders, um, in the room as well, and that information was brought forth, uh, to all of us. Of course, our Commonwealth attorney brought about the issue that they do have a witness protection, they do not have a witness protection program. There's no witness protection program, and after the meeting, I did have conversation with her, and everyone thinks that that money can come from the city of Portsmouth. Um, I asked her how much would it cost to fund or to get it started for a witness protection program, and she said it's going to cost about five hundred thousand dollars. Well, we can't come up with five hundred thousand dollars out of our budget one time, because it will be one time, and if we fund fifty families or ten families, because it's going to cost about fifty thousand to relocate someone to a whole nother area so that they're not in danger from the, the, the persons who are the perpetrators, uh, who, who are committing these crimes. So there are witnesses who want to come forth, they want to, to bleed their heart out, but they are afraid, because they are living in the same communities where these violent actions, uh, crimes are occurring. So for us, for her, or the state, or the federal, to come up with five hundred thousand dollars one time, what's going to happen next year, when all of that money is completed? We're going to need another five hundred thousand dollars, and then another five hundred thousand dollars, and then another five hundred thousand dollars. So this is not money, or this is not a program that's going to be funded, give it one thousand dollars, give it five hundred thousand dollars, give it a million dollars. How long is that money going to last? So those senators and those legislators in the room who have higher powers than we do are going to take what they heard those community leaders speak of, and they're going to try to go and enact. Senator L. Louise Lucas, who everyone in this room knows is my mother, she's going to take her actions to the Virginia General Assembly as the president pro tempore and the la, longest-serving senator in Virginia. She is number three out of forty senators in Virginia. Um, if she's reelected next year, and y'all know she has some challenges ahead of her, but we're going to be out there, she will be eventually number one senator, uh, and that is commendable. She's going to take the influence that she have with the Congressman Bobby Scott and with U.S. Senator Mark Warner, and they're going to put forth legislation, Don Scott, Delegate Don Scott also working on the table, to work with our Commonwealth attorney to, to make sure that there is reoccurring funding, because this is a, a serious issue. We need to fund a witness protection program so that we can get those persons who will come forth with factual information and relocate them to someplace else. And we also have to be, uh, accountable to ourselves, because we're in our own communities, and we know, you know, stuff that's going on, but we need to be able to speak to it. You know, you know, some of them might be your family, it might be your brother, it might be, you know, your sister, or it might be your cousin, you know, but people don't want to say, because everybody's protecting everybody, but we have to come forth, and Mr. Cradle, we love hearing those names, because you, you, you remind us every, every meeting, every bi-weekly meeting, who there we are. And Mr. Mrs. Walton, we, we thank you for bringing, you know, your, your son and your, your brother Curtis, uh, forward. We need to hear those names so that they can start to resonate in our spirit, so that some real action can begin to be taken. That we're not sitting here just not trying to act on your information, but the power is not at this local level for a lot of those issues, but when we come together and work together, together with you, together with us, together with our, uh, local community, and then we'll get some things done.
That's right.
One of the things, thank you, um, Councilwoman, you know, I had the pleasure of, you know, we listen to a lot of things up here, and, and I can share with you all, and, and I can't speak for every one of my colleagues, but there is nothing that, that moves me more than hearing these stories of lost loved ones. You know, I, I don't have the answer for it. I met the Waltons a couple of years ago at a prayer breakfast, and I didn't know, I knew of, of their son, and I knew of the story, but what was shared with me had really made a huge impact on me. So much so, we, we had become friends, and Cheryl had assisted us in doing a, driving the community to feed the homeless during Thanksgiving. This is tough stuff. This is tough stuff. And I'm not sitting up here like I have any answers, because I don't, but I do know this. We can't get to where we desire to get to if we don't all work together. Man, the losses that you all have experienced, I've never had that loss, and I, I, I pray to never have that loss. But I want you to know that the people up here, we, we, we don't just show up, we've got lives, we've got families, and we want you to know, when you hurt, we, we, we hurt too. And, and we want you to know that we're praying and we're hoping for better days too. And so just know that we've got work to do on that front, and we are ready to do the work, to do the advocacy that it's going to take for us to make the change that we desire to see. So I just wanted to share my thoughts and, and let you all know that from where I sit, I hear you. And I certainly want you to know that. Thank you. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I grieve too. I probably am as close to these kids, their fathers, their grandfathers, grandmothers, and mothers than most folk. I have emotion as well, but I'm here to keep my thoughts clear so I can... But I'm here to keep my thoughts clear so I can make a portion of the difference. Yes, all of us will have to make this difference, but I know within myself, because of my greater variety of experience and my longevity, that, and my ability to do that, that is right, I can make a difference here. Again, when you read the names, I hurt as well as you do, but that masculinity thing, I guess, kicks in and makes me hold it in. But on several occasions, I've coached these kids. I've trained their fathers. I've given them calls, their parents. And again, that's why I'm here, and because of my confidence, I intend to make a difference. And I will continue to make a difference, and everywhere I have gone in this city, I have made a difference. Thank you, God blesses. Good night.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Bonnie Walton and Cheryl Walton for showing up. I want to thank Cedric for coming here quite frequently to keep the names in front of us. Not that we forget them. How can you forget people that have been unjustly killed in our city? But you know, when I... Ms. Walton gave each of us, I believe, a gold coin here. It says, "Thank you for everything." Well, you know, to still have the spirit after what she's been through, I've attended Unseen Tears Meeting, and to hear the parents and kin of people who've lost kids. We all know that, you know, parents are supposed to go first. Their children aren't supposed to leave this world in a violent act. So I just want to thank Bonnie and Cheryl for coming here. It takes a lot to come and speak before this body. And I know Curtis is looking down, and he's mighty proud of y'all staying engaged. I think that's what he would want. I know that's what he would want because I was around him a lot and got to know him, and I miss him as well. And it was a privilege seeing them participate in the government here through the Youth Advisory Council and watching them grow up and got to know them, and that's always hard. And people ask, what can we do? You know, I wish, if the answer was easy, there wouldn't be any murders or any violence. I think the answer, true answer, is in everybody's heart. That's where the answer lies, not from government edict, whether it's state or city. It's in everybody's heart. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember, seeing no additional business for our consideration, we adjourn.